Call the Village Board meeting to order with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Otterston.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Mayor Hooker.
Aye.
Clerk Stengelson.
Attorney Magna.
Okay, if you would all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the beloved where it is sand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just give it a twist. Okay, our first item of business tonight is the consent agenda, which includes the following: approval of the minutes from the April 11th board meeting, bills presented for payment, the amount of $94,398.56, and the March finance report. All these items are included in your packet. Is there anything that the board would like to have considered separately? Anything that the public would like to have the board discuss and consider separately? As being done, I accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Otterston.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Motion carries. All right, next we have trustee reports. Building and zoning, we have trustee Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one item. I have before us tonight for your consideration a petition from Gert and Anna Reddenbach, who are seeking approval of a map amendment for rezoning of a subject property from B1 to R2, single-family residential district. The Reddenbachts have approached us due to the fact that they have tried to get refinancing on the property that they have on Sheridan Road, and they were unsuccessful due to the fact that the property has been rezoned, I think in 2005, it was rezoned from residential to B1. The subject property was developed as a single-family home about 1985, prior to the village's incorporation. The B1 district does not permit single-family homes at a permitted use. Fisher is seeking to continue the use of the single-family use of the subject property in a conforming manner under zoning ordinance. Property is adjacent to R2 districts, to the west and to the south and east. The property is already developed with a single-family home. No additional residence can be constructed on the R2 zoning. Subject property has been used for single-family dwelling since 1985, and they just seek to continue to use it as such. Subject property is already developed and will not affect the development of other areas, and the comprehensive plan designate the property for mixed use, which includes residency uses allowed under R2. There were no formal protests received at the time of the public hearing, and the planning commission has recommended the approval, six to zero, to approve the amendment. And that, I think we have Mr. Reddenbach, Mr. Reddenbach, I think we have them in the audience. Did you have anything you'd like to?
Just a point of clarification, Larry. The, in 1989, when the village incorporated, this property was zoned, R2, it was a residential zone.
Okay.
The village created a hybrid district at the time, or shortly thereafter, when the first zoning ordinance was adopted, which created the O1 zone, which was a hybrid. It was a residential zone with an office use overlay. That is what they're, what they were operating under until the village converted the hybrid zone into a B1 zone.
Okay.
So, there was a progression there, but understandably, if the finance company does not want to write a mortgage on commercial property, this is necessary to get them where they need to be, so.
Also, that property is actually next to the bluff, so the property, for the most part, is unusable as a commercial property. The only way that property would be able to be used is if they actually purchase additional property, maybe contiguous with it to expand, but right now, it's actually as limited access. You really can't see it from the road, so again, the planning commission found no objection with their request.
Okay, so did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to, yes, entertain that in the form of a motion, sir.
Okay, so that would be ordinance number eight, which would be an ordinance approving the petition of Gert and Anna Reddenbach for a map amendment from B1 Business District to R2 Single Family Residential District on property located at 38964 North Sheridan Road.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Must have been a very thorough presentation. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Otterston.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Tiff Committee, I have no report tonight. Public Works, trustee Otterston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry to disappoint, but I have no items on the agenda. There are a few things that will be covered under the engineers' report that are Public Works related.
Did you want to make any comment about our stellar Public Works crew and the recent opening of the sky, as it were?
Well, yeah, they have been out working a lot to catch up with everything. They've been in contact with the county, made a couple trips to Libertyville to pick up trailers full of sandbags to be handed out to homeowners that were in need. They've also received some cleanup, storm cleanup kits through the county that were provided by the Red Cross, so those things are available if there's anyone that has a need for help with a cleanup kit for anything that was damaged in the storm. We do have some things available here at Public Works. There are additional things if a need arises, still with the county, so they can be in contact with Village Hall or with Public Works to get on the list, but yeah, they were out all night.
Yep.
Couple times, I believe, so.
Yep.
It's the, what, the third hundred-year storm we've had in the last ten years?
Yeah.
At least.
Is that what it is?
Yep. I'm starting to question the measurement methods.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, next we have Finance Committee, trustee Jensen.
I'd like to report briefly on our April 18th Finance Committee meeting. We had a very productive meeting as we approach the end of our fiscal year. Among topics of interest that we are currently examining are tracking of doing a better job of comprehensively tracking our consultant and outsourcing expenses. We do track that, of course, now, but not in one place. It's scattered under various funds, as is appropriate for a county, but it makes it hard for laypeople to spot trends, so we're looking at that. Our finance directors and our administrative services director have been working on that. They also brought to us an interesting new program, it's a state debt recovery program, at least it's new to me, whereby, for no, at no fee, the state will help us to collect debts, and we have a number of small debts for various things that we're owing, and that's a kind of exciting program. What they do is they withhold it from tax returns and other state disbursements, so you're more likely to get paid for these things. We're also considering a fairly major project, which would be to move from scattered places throughout the code, various fees and charges, into one place so that annually, the board could adjust only by changing, by amending one section of the code, amend all the fees, adjust the fees as up or down as necessary, rather than a shotgun approach throughout the code, which is kind of, that's a trend, I'm told, in other communities as well. And in conjunction with that, we have asked to take a look at the appropriateness of the fees and licenses that are being charged to make sure that the costs of service are covered by those costs. Since we can't print money here like we do in Washington, we have to match those up.
Right.
And, oh, and we've rescheduled our next meeting. For those of you, these are exciting, you should all come to May 21st. We had a scheduling conflict, so that's been rescheduled. That concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Public Safety, trustee Sittick.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only item I have to report is that the Public Safety Committee has a meeting scheduled for May 23rd at 6:00 PM upper level prior to the next board meeting, and we'll be discussing various items, and of course, the public is always welcome to attend our Public Safety Committee meetings. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Public Relations, Economic Development, trustee Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one item tonight, and this is an initiative that the village is participating in with the United States Department of Justice. This Saturday will be another one of the National Take Back Prescription Drug Days, and it's going to be held here at the Village Hall from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the lower level. Actually, the Drug Enforcement Administration sponsors these, and they work in conjunction with state, local, and tribal, they call them, law enforcement partners. They've collected through these efforts over 2 million pounds of prescription medications that they have actually removed from circulation, and if you would like more information about what items are, certain items that are restricted, they will not accept them, such as hypodermic needles or certain types of liquid, I would suggest everybody take a look at our new village website that has gone live as of April 1st, and there will be some posted information right on the homepage about the Drug Take Back Day with more details about it. That's all I have, thank you.
And it makes you wonder, if there's 2 million pounds of unused drugs, how many million pounds are used? Yeah, okay.
Not more than that, apparently.
Parks and Recreation, trustee Gust.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for your information, we are planning three different trips. One trip's going to be to Mount Rushmore for six days. We have an overnight trip at Fort Atkinson for a dinner and a show, and we also have a trip started to Mackinac Island. Information will come as soon as I receive it.
Very good.
And that ends it.
Thank you. On to staff reports. First, we have the village engineer, and we have a couple items there.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items here this evening. The first is the resolution, for your consideration, is a resolution to appropriate $300,000 of the village's MFT funds for the 2013 street resurfacing program. This year, what's being proposed is, in addition to resurfacing streets within the village, we're also looking at doing some more maintenance proactive measures too, such as crack sealing, street patching, and some pavement rejuvenation. This year, the streets that are being proposed for resurfacing are Mauman Avenue, east of Sheridan Road, Hendy Avenue from Birch Avenue to Frolic Avenue, Dorothy Avenue from Metropolitan Avenue to the unimproved Frolic Avenue right-of-way, Hickory Road, Richard Place, Sunlight Court, and then Wall Street between Green Bay Road and Adelphi. These particular streets are actually, the reason they're being paved this particular year is, two years ago, or maybe a year ago now, a report on the condition of the streets was done. These streets are at the bottom of the list, and obviously, they are the higher priority of any other of the streets within the village. We also are, like I said, crack sealing is involved in this year's project too. This year's crack sealing actually was bid through Lake County Municipal League's Cooperative Purchasing Program, which was in conjunction with several other municipalities within Lake County. The lowest bid that actually came in was actually half of what the village has actually spent on crack sealing in the past, so it turned out to be a very, very good thing for the village. So, we actually saved about half the money we normally would by going through this program. So, that being said is, I'd ask for a motion to approve the resolution to appropriate $300,000 of the village's MFT fund for the 2013 street resurfacing program.
Someone, we have a motion and a second. This is Resolution 18. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Otterston.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and then last would be the approval of the Engineering Services Agreement with RHMG for the 2013 MFT Street Maintenance Program. In the packets, actually, the board actually has passed the Design Engineering Services previously. We actually did that in the fall. This would actually now include the Construction Engineering Services. In order for the funds, actually, the engineering fees and stuff to be covered by MFT funds, we obviously need to pass this agreement. What we're proposing to do is the Design Engineering, which we actually have currently done, was at 5% of the actual construction cost, and the Construction Engineering Services then would be at 6% of what the engineering costs. That's actually what is allowed by IDOT under the MFT guidelines. That being said, I'd ask for a motion to approve the Engineering Services Agreement for the 2013 MFT Street Resurfacing, or Street Maintenance Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This would be Resolution Number 19. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Otterston.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chip. Okay, next, John, Village Administrative Services Director report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first thing there, Your Honor, is a motion to approve the pay request number two for MD Electric. This is for the Village Hall generator. The Village Hall generator is substantially finished. The only item remaining is the plumbing for the gas. The pay request is for $15,000. We are still holding approximately 11% as a retainage, which we will continue to hold until the startup of the generator.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve that expenditure, that request number two.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Otterston.
Motion carries.
The second item on the agenda there, Your Honor, is really a housekeeping item. This relates to MFT expenditures and disbursements by the state, really looking for a motion to accept the MFT audit report number 13. This is for the years January 1st of 2009 through December 31st of 2011. There are a few deficiencies in that report that staff is currently working with the engineers to get those documentation to MFT for those expenditures. It's something that's typically done after the fact, as it is being done this time.
In other words, that will not affect this report? This report stands as it's presented to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, need a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The third item on the agenda, Your Honor, is really a, was to be a consideration of an ordinance approving a recapture agreement for a water main down Waldo Avenue. Upon talking to the village attorney, I don't know if the ordinance itself is ready to be approved tonight. However, we are looking for at least a motion, kind of authorizing staff and the consultants to continue to pursue this project, really with the intent that the details remain the same as they are today. Really, Mr. Brigitte, he is here in the audience today. He has offered to finance running a water main down Waldo Avenue, past four properties. In return, he's asking that the village structure a recapture agreement for the three properties to be able to help him recapture the amount of running the total water main. As of right now, the engineering's estimates, that project is about 90,000, somewhere between 70,000 and 90,000. Mr. Brigitte would be responsible for 25% of that. Each of the additional three properties would be responsible for the remaining 25% each, totaling 100% of the project.
So, to clarify, the cost sharing would take place whenever someone would want to use that line to connect to that line in the future, not necessarily them paying that price today?
That is correct, sir. This would be a 20-year agreement. This would be a 20-year agreement, really, that would only impact the people that want to make a connection during those 20 years. Mr. Brigette has agreed to a 0% interest rate over those 20 years, so whether they connect now or they connect in year 19, they're not being penalized. There's no additional interest being charged by Mr. Brigette for that connection.
Understood. And the, so the details that are missing are the items that we were not prepared to complete tonight or to formalize the agreement. You're basically looking for permission for staff to execute agreement based substantially as this is presented tonight?
Yes, sir. The big variable, when this agreement is finalized and recorded, it will need to have final dollar amounts for the actual construction cost. The engineer estimates, the original engineer estimates are approximately $90,000. Discussions with Mr. Brigette, it looks like the project may be able to be done substantially less than that, probably closer to 60,000 or 70,000.
Okay.
And those details would then be recorded in the final agreement that would then be recorded with the county.
So basically, what staff is asking for tonight would be a motion that would allow myself to execute this agreement upon advice and counsel from the attorney, as well as further ratification from the board at a future meeting once this was executed. Basically, we're missing the details that John has explained, and the attorney has some concerns on, just to make sure that the language is proper. But we don't want to hold the project up any longer than necessary to allow the developer to get the water main in the ground, so to speak, as soon as practical. So with that in mind, I guess I'm going to ask the attorney to craft that motion so that we cover the bases that he would like to have covered, so.
I was ready to do it, but go ahead, Reed. No, no, that's fine. It would be appropriate for the board to consider a motion to authorize the mayor, at his discussion, to execute on behalf of the village a recapture agreement for the property known as PIN number, oh, I'm sorry, address 12480 West Waldo Avenue, and that the final agreement be brought back to the village board for ratification. It'll be a binding agreement when the mayor signs it, but you'll want to see the final agreement. There are just some details. This was a template document, and consequently, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but I think the substance is there. There's a basic understanding, just a couple of little details that need to be added in there, like the price, like a true-up to actual cost. You're not going to cast a recapture on these benefited properties on an estimated cost. It's going to be based on the actual, so that if there's savings to the developer, there'll be savings to the people who have to pay the recapture later. Right now, there is no actual cost, so there needs to be what's called a true-up provision put in here.
Okay.
And your engineer will certify to the village the actual cost. And if there's savings, there's savings for everybody. Those are the things that are not in here. So, the motion would be appropriate, just to summarize, the motion would be appropriate to authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the village Beach Park a recapture agreement between the village and Mr. Rob Brigette for installation of water main at property located at 12480 West Waldo Avenue at the mayor's discussion and in consultation with staff and village attorney.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's got to be some discussion.
Do you have a question?
You look like you were ready to ask.
Thank you. I was just curious about the 20-year recapture. Was that a standard year, or where did that particular number of years come from?
I don't know.
That was discussed in the Public Works Committee. It went from basically 10 years, 15 years, to 20 years, and it was finally agreed upon. The 20 years, no interest.
That maximizes the amount of time the developer would have to recapture should someone develop within that time, and the trade-off being that there's no interest being charged, which would make it, at some point, probably financially impractical for someone to join in.
The no interest lends itself to a longer term. It's just somebody has to remember it, but I'm sure you'll all still be here in 20 years. So, but there does need to be on either your GIS system or somehow a flagging of this, because the significance of a recapture agreement is the village's commitment to the developer, that the village will collect that recapture if a connection is made. And the case law, under the statute that allows for recaptures, is very clear. If the village would let somebody connect, just on the payment of the basic permit and not collect the recapture fee, the village is still obligated to pay that amount of the recapture, but you cannot go back to the person who connected.
Therefore, we will remember. You will.
And my other question happens to be, I know we have a standing ordinance now that states that if you're within 250 feet of that main, you're required to hook up. How is that going to affect this particular situation?
That's the same issue that you've had for a very long time here. The ordinance says what it says. Whether or not you're going to require people to connect and not just pay a connection fee, but a significant recapture fee, I mean, that's a policy decision. Sooner or later, they're all going to need the water, though. I think that's why with the 20 years, there's a fairly good assurance that the party will get their money back at some point.
The three parcels that are being encumbered by this recapture agreement, are they developed at this point?
Two are, and one is not.
So at such time as that parcel would change hands under our ordinance, that would be the normal trigger.
Right.
Without parcels, if they were to build new, they would have water within 250 feet. They would need to connect to it. There would be nothing to trigger an automatic requirement to connect just because the main was added.
Mm-hmm.
And just to clarify, the one that is not developed is owned by Mr. Brigette also.
Oh, I have a question.
Sure.
Does the recapture attach to the property owner or the property? What if they were to move before 20 years?
It's, the recapture agreement, when it's completed, is recorded with the Recorders of Deeds Office with the benefited parcels, the three other parcels that were mentioned, specifically described in the recapture agreement. So the recapture agreement is recorded to that, so that if there's a transfer of title, presumably, there'll be a title search or title insurance or something of that nature that will disclose the recapture agreement. Once it's recorded, it's held to, notices held to have been given to the property owners whether or not the new owner searches title.
Okay.
So that's what locks it in, is the recording.
Do we anticipate this will be back to us by next board meeting?
As long as we get the figures, and, there's a couple of questions that I have. I met briefly with John yesterday, I believe it was, and we talked about a few things, and I recommended that it go by way of this kind of a motion tonight, because it just is not finalized.
Okay.
Just to clarify, this main will be built in the village right away, built to village specifications and certified by our engineer to that effect.
Yes.
Title to the village. And our obligation under this agreement is to collect at some future date the recapture. That's it. We're not out of pocket. The developer, the gentleman who's doing this, pays the upfront cost.
Exactly.
Yes.
Along with a 4% administration fee at the time of the recapture to cover the village's costs at that time.
Okay. So there'll be some recoupment. And, Trustee, that's one of the things that I would suggest be added, and I'll suggest it to the mayor, and that there's no connection to this main by the developer or otherwise until it is completed, tested, inspected, waivers are approved, so that there's no leans, mechanics leans that come along with it. And it won't be approved unless our village engineer certifies that it meets our village specifications. So those are the little safety valves that need to be added into this.
And one more, follow back to Trustee Siddick's question. As far as obligation to connect, was there not some other requirement having to do with failing wells and that sort of thing?
Yeah, and anything in our ordinance that would.
Yeah, so that might also, apart from changing ownership.
You're correct. You're correct. If an individual has a well that failed and they're within 250 feet, that would also apply, yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and we've had our discussion, so roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Otterston.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. Further?
That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any report from the village attorney tonight?
I've already made my report, Your Honor.
All right. Boy, you're running out of meetings here. Do you have anything to add tonight?
I have no, no.
On that topic, we will have the swearing-in of newly-elected officials at our next board meeting, which will be May 9th. And at that point, there will be a changing of the guard for our clerk, so we're not looking forward to that. But we are looking forward to that, but we're not looking forward to it. But we really can't wait till you start, Mary, but.
I see, man.
This is awkward.
Village Clerk 2.0.
2.0.
Yes.
Very true, very true. One thing I would like to add to my report, you will see on the news, and you'll see in the newspaper, that we had an attempted child abduction here in Beach Park last, yesterday evening, afternoon. We had an individual that attempted to lure four young girls into his car over on Walsh Lane in Cambridge, Walsh Lane, I should say. And fortunately, the children, ages four through eight, did the right thing and ran away. The individual pursued them, and they were able to get away unharmed. One of the girls told her mother, and the mother was able to capture a license plate number. The individual left the scene, drove to the area of Wadsworth and Delaney where he hit another vehicle, then ran from that. Then the individual made it south to York House where a Waukegan squad stopped him and placed him under arrest, called the Sheriff's Department to come over. They took him into custody, and they have filed four counts of aggravated, attempted aggravated kidnapping, and four counts of, I believe, aggravated, or attempted child abduction. Both are felonies. He's also issued some traffic citations for the failure to reduce speed to avoid an accident and leaving the scene of a property damage accident. His bond has been set at $1 million, and he's scheduled to appear in court on May 3rd. Just like to stop here for a second and publicly thank the Sheriff's Department for their fine job. Their response time was very quick on this. They got the word out that this individual was on the loose. That resulted in the Waukegan police knowing that they were looking for this guy that quick, and it was almost over before it started. So much to be grateful for here. Kids were well-trained by their parents. The stranger danger, we can't underemphasize that, or overemphasize that, I should say, that we need to always keep our kids and grandkids that way. We live in a broken world with some sick people in it, and I'm just so grateful that we're here talking about a capture and no injuries or harm, as opposed to some of the other things that we get to read about and see in the news every night. So just a great appreciation to Sheriff Curran and his team, and the way that they handled the situation, as well as the Waukegan Police Department for their part in it as well. So now's the time that any citizen that would like to address the board is free to come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your case.
I'm Lee Bloodsow from Alstap. I guess I'm representing other tavern owners here in Beach Park at this time. We were here about three months ago and stated what we wanted to do with the video gaming machines. It's been three months now, and since that time, Windsor Harbor is up and going now. So the Waukegans are going, so we're kind of on an island here. We need it real well to have those gaming machines. And I realize that you've had election here and everything was kind of on hold and everything. I wonder if we could kind of speed it up and maybe give us an answer one way or the other, if possible, as soon as you can.
And so you know, although there was nothing publicly done during that period, we have had our staff working with others and communicating with other municipalities, looking for information, reviewing reports of what's going on in the communities that are actually up and running.
Right.
The last reports I saw, Windsor Harbor hadn't produced anything yet, but they were getting their machines and getting some activity.
Carrie just told me that they got a banner up on Joe's place down there at the tavern, so they're in operation.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons we kind of got nervous about it, because that's going to really hurt us.
Yeah. And with the election over and the staff is full speed ahead on getting information together for the board and to have the, give the board the information they need to understand exactly what would be required of the village, what would be the result of it, both from a revenue and an activity point. So we are on it, and we've had enough prompts over the last couple of months to keep us awake there, so.
Right. Like I say, we're just getting a little nervous about it.
Yeah, yes. Understood.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm here with Lee also. I'm Bob Clark, and we're with Clark's Saloon on Sheridan Road. And I've had just, in the last couple, three weeks, went into a couple establishments in Waukegan just to see what's going on and who's making money and who's not making money and talk to the owners. And this for the three, I think, establishments in Beach Park would be us, Hickory House, and Alstap, would basically be 15 machines. 15 machines, it's nothing as far as to the village, I wouldn't think, but 15 machines to us personally, the bottom line is unbelievable. These people are bringing in 15, 18, $8,000 a month on the bottom line. I mean, and this is machines that are run by the state. I mean, there's no crime involved in this thing. They don't get sick. They don't call in ill. It's just money that you just find at the end of the month. You get a check from the state. And it also, you know, reflects back to the village. You guys get a certain percent of that kind of income. But it's huge for us as small businessmen. The economy is bad enough as it is, and something like this just keeps us in business. And we definitely, definitely need it, and we hopefully got your support to back this. So that's, you know, all I can say.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I could add on, just a little information. The state, I believe it was the House, passed a bill to basically stop sharing all the financial information with the public as far as what's going on at these video gaming outlets. It's interesting that that's information that we would be depending heavily on, you know, making our. decisions in other communities would be as well, um, as well as the, the company that oversees that information is wanting the permission to start manufacturing the machines themselves as well. So it's an interesting time, um, and there's a lot of balls in the air, um, for us to consider as well, but we're definitely looking at it, and we are taking it seriously. We understand your...
Jim Gibbs is from, uh, he's from, the Gaming Commission, and we could, well, I'm sure you have this also. It's a monthly report on every bar owner in the state of Illinois.
Yep.
And it gives you the percentages, how much money you're...
And we do, we have received those.
You've got those? Okay.
That's the reports that the state doesn't want us to see anymore.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So hang on to that one. Yeah.
There's somebody like us, Bill. Thank you.
Sure. No, it's, that's only, that act has only made it through one of the houses at this point, so it's not a done deal. All right, um, last call. Anyone else would like to, uh, address the board tonight? All right. Uh, we do have cause for an executive session, um, and so I would accept the motion to adjourn into executive session to consider the acceptance and, um, publication of past executive session minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Otterston.
Aye.
Sidik.
Aye.
You Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session.
Stairs or next door?
We'll go next door. It's closer. Besides, it here, it's hot upstairs.
I thought you had one there. That's it. That, uh, like, shit. Nothing's in it, no. Okay, don't give me that. I'm sorry. I got you some. Here it is.
Which one is it, anyway?
Um, yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. I better make sure I have it. Oh, yeah, I do. I do.
The money and the tickets are all stuck. I had to use them all. I tried to give them one.
There we go.
I, I understand. You know, I thought, oh, I get some French family. My kids wouldn't come. My...
So the first question's there. But at the same time...
My daughter's 15, 18, but I still love her fifteen.
No, no, I mean, they're, they're... Not really bringing it up. Oh, yeah, we, we extended this to, up to York House and, and sure, but it's not...
York's so close.
It's so close, yeah.
If we get somebody to develop on that corner, it would...
Nice to see you two professionals today. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
My daughter just finished driving herself. She's gonna start driving now. We got two brothers.
Good luck.
They're driving.
Good luck with your daughter driving.
I have two boys that drive. Her girl's worse.
We had to say this suburban phone to my daughter. Get her out of my car.
My son, my son.
Really?
Yeah. She, she...
My daughter was very...
Nick's made posters, one in your box. He plays two for your mirror. I'm like, seriously?
Okay.
She was nuts. I, she drove me nuts. Absolutely. Two and a half years. The good news is that I got in with my son, he's down there and... And he says, they don't, he's doing... And he's four on 95. Very scary.
Yeah, I hear that.
Terry Hill. Can you move it? Carney? Hey. No, I won't be here in 24 years, so... You, you, I'm older than you are. That's all right. I'm older than everybody in here. Really? Yeah, sure. Oh, wait.
There it is.
I got, I got eight years in.
Okay.
As my mom did at 9:00. I had a sweet show at 9:00.
Oh, that's great. Twenty-nine years old. And it sounds like... What's in his first time? I'm telling you. Yeah. It is. Well, you know, because we had that... My kids, my kids, you know, baby. Yeah, he looked like 29, thirty-one. He'd have awesome yard, going to the... And they'd be like, you're higher older, right? You know, let them go after... The day purchase, why didn't call them? And I know when they get off the bus, I don't take a chance. No, I can't, I can't run that mass table. Never good. Yeah. Sure. Brian, Brian, they didn't know who's gonna pull up behind the bus when they get off or... They're talking about, I saw in the paper, they were talking about, um, passing a law, which unfortunately then adds more money, putting cameras on the muscles that'll get pictures of people who run through or, you know, cameras. Oh, yeah. Yeah. The same person that I met kids the other day.
They're waiting, so they have to listen to their name. Uh, listen, the sheriff put care of no money would have been getting.
How much did you get in turn?
I don't know. They paid for that, they had no money at all. No money at all. You were even showing... Okay. I know, but she's not sober.
Actually, um...
We just probably started to say something, and the other team were sitting out there going. So here's the reason you go with the... Sometimes, uh, you got to get him. I mean, if there's a... And kids seeing Lori, because Lori didn't want to... This is like, I got a... Now I'm thinking about maybe I need to... Because I got a...
Yes, it is. They are not legal street vehicles. I know. Yeah. Yeah. Kid on a four-wheel? Yeah. It's a cell phone, right? Like they do.
You know, I put it up. Couldn't have fixed a pole with them. Oh, you did something. But, uh, it was a way. So I've seen that before. They didn't get out there till...
Oh, yes.
Well, they came by a couple...
Yeah.
And then...
Kids, aren't they? Really sure of it, yeah.
Unfortunately, my van is only running like 15 minutes. Because there's, I mean, I'll show, five, five or six houses on a big sided road like this. Four digit end. And you have little pumps. Uh, yeah.
He's like, you wanna get right on that.
They all are, yeah. Burn the pump on it, just start something. We're pretty for... When they had the Friday show.
Excitement.
Then I went and, and... But it had to be slightly here in the sand, so they had to tear up the base. The two pumps in, I mean, the two pits in, and the four pumps, and it cost you fifty dollars.
My sister put her house on the market.
And then I got one.
Three years ago. And almost in a week after... They found a house on Hudson Perry, which is where they wanted to go, and put an offer on it to accept the...
And they said...
They got an offer for almost what they were asking on their house in design, which we were like, wow. Um, but then they also put the price down to twenty thousand. They got her nice little ranch home over on 19 Ezra, and it's in good shape. I mean, it's, but the neighborhood, like, you look out the side window and the neighbor's house is falling apart, and so the first deal started, yeah, started to go through, and then the girl brought her parents by. Well, that fell through. Well, they looked at the house next door, and said, Kim, you can't blame them. This is what you're leaving. One of the major reasons, you know, is the house next door. You can't blame them, you know. Well, now they have, I don't know. They have open house Sunday, and they have one family that fell. I mean, I drove for her, but I... Yeah. There are people out there looking, but I thought they'd be looking a lot lower. Yeah. And a couple of the realtors that came from realtor open house, they were very happy that it had all its planning. I went, yeah, that's probably what you're saying, there's a lot of poor homes that have no... They take everything. They take everything. And it's funny, my mom has been taking some of my dad's basement, they've been taking it to Cleveland to recycle it, and, you know, and she's, mom, and she's like, she was like, we're cleaning out my husband's basement. I know we've been here a lot lately. I just don't want anybody to think anything, and I'm going, oh, I just... No, sure. I have been forbidden to go to my green area, where I have many tires on my car. He doesn't get too many flat tires. But the one in Zion takes steel, it takes a ton of stuff. Yeah. And it's real nice. Yeah.
Oh, your son off the garage has...
Spending money. My kids moved out, they quit making money. They kept starting borrowing and then we're taking the... I was like...
You know, every once in a while they... Especially with the basics.
Think the water plant? Yeah. Look, look what they're doing to the couple of works going on, 3829. Yeah, they brought in American Recycling, cleaning up big dumpsters out there, and our couple of works guys are doing it. Yes, they're going to stuff in there, and they're recycling a little bit of all of that. Well, hopefully cleaning, yeah, it is for sale, I believe. They gotta clean it up first, well. They had two couple things in there. They never, they didn't come through, yeah. Yeah, the lady next door just recently, some other furniture.
They got you sitting over here in the corner, just bring them around.
I'm related to, uh, corner seats.
So I got us on unemployment this week. Although I had to do a tax thing, and, um, I had... And he always asks somebody to, uh, I'm doing... I talked to, uh, somebody, I'm online, you know, at different... Sure. They got 98 extension... They had to file for 98 extensions for their clients.
But that's good, because now those... Because that's seriously got, uh, some air out, and it's 79 degrees in their office, so that's not... It was, it was pretty hot when they were doing the pictures and everything, so I turned it down a little bit.
It wasn't available. That's right, which probably, he said that we had... 85, 82 is not available. The 85, 82 is not available.
I mean, it's kind of like dying in here. And also I.
Yep. So anyway, but overall, he said, your personal.
My business is wrong.
No 85, 82.
I don't, I don't have anymore.
March the 6th. March the 6th.
Well, last night. I have a nice. Okay, don't rain.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And John told. It's raining out.
And they don't give you.
Right, right. But what happened is. A lot, a couple a lot from Chicago got wind of this.
Okay, uh, I'd like to have a motion to reconvene.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Hi.
I hear.
Hi.
We're here.
All present and accounted for. We reconvene. Um, we have no action to take on, as a result of the executive session tonight. Is there any other business for this august board?
I would make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting. I second that motion.
A motion, a second, and another second.
Double second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Yes. All right.
Hi.
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 We are adjourned.
Why not box? She's hot.